We'll call this meeting to order and have a roll call vote for attendance this afternoon. Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Woodson?
Here.
Mr. Parrish?
Here.
And I'm Christine Smith, the Chair from Piedmont District. I'm here also. So everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Right, the first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion? It's on the agenda this afternoon, please.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Woodson. Is there any discussion as to the agenda for today? All right, if there's no further discussion, we're going to vote. Mr. Frazier.
Hi.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Woodson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. That takes us to the next item of business, C1, the school report with the Superintendent,
Hello, good afternoon, everybody. Greetings from your friends in Pantherland. This week actually marks the beginning of back to school with new teachers having reported just this morning to begin their orientation, and all staff come back from summer break on Wednesday. As you know, we now have an adopted reopening plan and new school calendar which pushes the start date of school out to August 24th. This will give our teachers and staff enough time to learn new safety requirements, protocols, and train on our new learning management system Canvas that is being offered free to school divisions because of a recent state contract with the Virginia Department of Education. We have so much to do, and this school year will be one like no other. We are wrapping up all our re-entry phone calls today. The RCPS administration staff has successfully made over 700 phone calls in six days. For those that we were not able to contact, we are sending an option to fill out an online form with information on how to apply for four-day in-person instruction or opt into 100% remote learning. So far, I'm happy to report that due to the high number of families choosing remote option paired with our hybrid model and capping our class sizes, we are most likely, most likely, going to be able to accommodate most of the four-day applications. We are also working very closely with CCLC, Headwaters, and other community foundations and organizations to help working families with the very real and challenging issue of finding affordable childcare on remote learning days when work schedules will not allow flexibility necessary to support learning from home. We are very optimistic that solutions are coming, so please stay tuned for announcements to that effect as we approach reopening schools. Another interesting data point that we have found out on these phone calls is that only 32% of our families report having high-speed internet, with the other 68% having spotty satellite or cell hotspot coverage or nothing at all. This issue of rural broadband has truly risen to the forefront as schools have been forced to provide options for remote learning. Rural districts must be creative in providing equitable educational services while dealing with the very real challenge of accessibility disparities that exist among our families. RCPS thanks the supervisors so much for your high prioritization of schools during your CARES funding discussions. I understand that another round of CARES act funds has made itself available. Perhaps there are implications for rural broadband infrastructure expansion. As always, thank you so much for your support of our school system during this difficult time. The entire process has really taken a village to navigate, and we are so very blessed to have such a close-knit, small but mighty village as Rappahannock to work through these challenges together. So, thank you. Do you have any questions for me?
Do any of the board members have any questions?
Madam Chair, Kier Woodson, representing the Hampton District. Dr. Grimsley, could you just give us a brief update on the capital projects underway that are directly related to ensuring health and safety for the student body and staff as those relate to the recent funding request and allocation of CARES Act money?
Well, certainly, for capital itself, the major project was the auditorium at the high school, and we hope that that will progress pretty soon and be completed in September. So that will allow us to take our bigger sections and separate them further for in-person instruction, more capabilities there, and its lecture seating and new tile throughout and a revamping of that, which, as you recall, was on our capital improvement project, capital improvement plan for next year. So it was a nice kind of double use of funds to be able to do that and free up that project for later. The Chromebooks have been ordered, and those should be here next week to give us time to get them all synced and ready, and that was the other big request item for that. So we anticipate having all those ready for students when they come back on the 24th.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Dr. Grimsley, and I do appreciate your carrying the ball on the helping the families figure out their care schedules for their children, particularly working families that do have to report five days a week, and that this does place a burden on them to figure out those additional care days. So I do appreciate that extra burden you've taken on helping resolve that, and if you could just please keep me in the loop on that as it develops, that would be fantastic.
Absolutely.
Because I do have some constituents waiting on that information.
Yes, ma'am.
The other thing I wanted to ask was on a VACO call the other week, there was some talk about the GIRS funding that's become available at the state level?
Yes.
Specifically for technology sources, particularly hotspots and MiFi?
Yes.
I was wondering if that was going to be possibly a useful solution for Rappahannock?
We are currently, the schools' allocation of GIRS funding is set aside through CARES. We are applying for that as is competitive grant process, so we are putting in that application by August 14th to help with some of those hotspot subscription costs and other things that could otherwise be used with CARES funding, but if we can piecemeal that out, the funding costs are adding up quite a bit, especially with the PPE costs and additional custodial staffing and there may be additional staff needs as we help with the four-day instruction and remote learning modalities. So as we look at that, we're looking at any additional funding source to offset those costs.
That's fantastic.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much, Dr. Grimsley.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions? School starts in three weeks, I guess.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Can't wait to get them back.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That takes us to the next item on the agenda. D1 is the public comment. To participate in public comment, please approach the microphone and address your comments to the board. We ask that you identify yourself by name and the district that you are from, and keep your comments to three to five minutes, please, and then we will, everybody will have a chance that way. If you could raise your hand if you'd like to speak, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Maureen Harris. I'm from the Piedmont District, and I've come to you today with what I think is a very important personnel matter that I hope you could act on because there's a certain manner of emergency in this regard. Amanda Weekly has been an employee of the library for 10 years. She served as the children's youth librarian and as assistant director. She's now the acting director because of the departure of David Schaefer. She's done an excellent job of managing the library during this COVID crisis. She's expecting her first baby in early October, and the county apparently has no written policy on granting maternity leave. The only, the only instance of this was about a year ago with a very new employee who was in the office of the Commissioner of Revenue, and she was so new to the job that she was not granted any particular favors for maternity leave, although her job was secure and she did return to her job. In, on August 15, 2018, Governor Northam addressed this issue with Executive Order Number 12, and I've given Gary copies of the order, and each of you now have it, I believe. And this grants, this executive order grants paid family leave to all individuals employed by the Virginia government. Some of us believe that this benefit should be extended to Amanda and to all other employees who require family leave while they're employed by the county. It seems to us unconscionable that in the year 2020, a devoted long-term employee who becomes pregnant would not receive her salary while on a short-term leave to have a baby and care for it afterwards. Amanda's salary is already in the budget for the library, so there would be no additional money appropriated for this. It's just that she would not have to use what little annual leave and sick leave she has to be absent from her job while she's delivering the baby and caring for it afterwards. So I hope this explains the situation to you. I hope you would look favorably on grant, on adopting a policy of paid family leave for this county. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Mrs. Harris. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
My name is Teresa Sidro. I'm from the Jackson District. I'm also on the library board, speaking only for myself and possibly for our, the President of our board, who is in the parking lot but doesn't feel safe coming into this place because some people aren't wearing masks. And I'm wondering, how is it that at a public meeting, there are people not wearing masks and this isn't being enforced? But never mind that. I have emailed all of you and given you information on the financial part of this. I just want to speak for a moment to those of you who say, "This isn't a good time. We don't have the money. We've taken a big economic hit." Yeah, I know. And then in the 1950s, when we suddenly had to pay our black employees the same as white employees, people said the same darn thing. "We can't afford that." And I personally remember in the '60s and '70s, when suddenly somebody got the crazy idea that women should be paid the same amount as men, well, that was an outrageous idea, and it was going to cost way too much money. And now, this relatively small amount of money that we're talking about here is also way too expensive. It's 2020. This is the standard for state employees, this is the standard for federal employees. Let's all get on board and just do this. Now, when I look around at the employees of the county, I hardly see anybody who's very likely to suddenly either be pregnant or adopting a child. People in their 50s and 60s very rarely want additional children. I don't think it's going to happen much. I hope that you will seriously consider getting this done now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board, Mr. Curry. Teresa Wood from the Hampton District. I'm here today, though, representing businesses of Rappahannock. First, I'd like to start off by saying thank you all very much for supporting the small businesses in this community. We're very thankful for the $125,000 that you provided for us in the last meeting. What I would like to say today is that we did ask for $200,000, and since there's additional CARES Act funding available, we'd like to make up that difference with the 125 and the 200. However, any funds that you might grant to us in that amount or additional, if you see fit, would be utilized strictly for the business grant program. We'd also like to put forward that if you see fit to do this, we find it a good avenue for getting money into fire and rescue, and we still want to put that forward. We know that fire and rescue has sustained substantial losses in revenue, and I think that this is a good mechanism for getting that money out to them. We welcome any input that you might have, but we'd just like to put it out there that we want to help fire and rescue, and we want to support them and help them make up that revenue. So that's all I have today. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wood. Mr. Glenny, I think you had your hand up as well.
Page Glenny, Jackson District. Good afternoon. Thank you.
Can you not put the paper in front of the mic?
Well, I was trying to set up a mask over the paper. All right. Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to address you regarding FOIA. The second sentence of Virginia Code 2.2, 3700, reads, and I quote, "The affairs of government are not intended to be conducted in an atmosphere of secrecy since at all times the public is to be the beneficiary of any action taken at any level of government." The rationale behind that sentence is that the public is not only the beneficiary of actions taken, but also the public body's supervisor. The public is to hear the reasons you make your decisions, not just the decision. The public is to hear the debate, the pros and the cons on issues. The way the public can, that way the public can understand the issues involved and can hold you accountable at the voting booth. However, after all the controversy and thousands of dollars spent on the Bragg case, it appears that lesson has not been learned. Let me read that statute again. "The affairs of government are not intended to be conducted in an atmosphere of secrecy since at all times the public is to be the beneficiary of any action taken at any level of government." What I'm referring to is the board's compulsion to discuss proposed issues and action items on email prior to the meeting. The concept to get consensus on issues outside of a public forum is, in my interpretation of the law, illegal. It makes this meeting little more than a stage play because the decisions are all but made in advance except for the formal vote. The process forces the public into submitting FOIA requests to obtain the back-and-forth discussions on issues by the board members that they are entitled to. Since the public is not aware of which topics are being discussed on email, that in turn would create phishing FOIA requests, creating a significant workload for your FOIA officer. This process of email debate also fosters ill will among members of the board. Games are played, divisions are hardened. Consequently, in my mind, this board has become just as dysfunctional as the previous boards. I plead with you to stop the discussion of issues outside of public forums. I believe it will result in better decisions and higher productivity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Glenny. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Oh, I'm so sorry.
I don't know what to say. I don't know what's going on, who came up with this resolution for tonight, or why, or even what it means deeply, but I'm tired of the bickering in this county, which has gotten pretty darn mean. And you guys have much more important things to deal with than these resolution things. The last one was stupid, and this one is, in my mind, too. I don't care what it says. You guys need to knuckle down and work on the work that you have to do. And for a while, things were calmer because we were so involved in doing what was necessary. And I don't care who or what this is about. It's not necessary. And somebody who I hardly ever agree with is saying it's causing, things are causing conflict. Well, this is causing conflict. I don't even get on the internet and look at what's going on here. I do not follow the social media, but I'm hearing it from people, and they're saying, "You go to the board meeting? What the heck is going on?" And so I just, just drop the whole thing and get to the real work that you guys got to do. If you don't like what's going on, write your own darn law and send it to your delegate or your senator and ask them to do something about it. If you don't like something, take it to the Supreme Court. But please, let's stick to the real business we're supposed to be about.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? If there's no one else that wishes to speak, I would declare this public comment period to be closed. That takes us to the consent agenda for today's meeting, which I actually do try to keep with the consent agenda, but for today's meeting, I would like to pull out the, under the minutes for adoption, I would like to pull out the, which one is it? It's the emergency special meeting of...
March 30th.
March 30th, yes. Thank you, Mr. Curry. The draft Board of Supervisors Special Meeting Minutes. So with that in mind, I would entertain a motion for the adoption of any or all of the minutes except for that one, please.
Madam Chair, I'd also like to pull out accounts payable. Again, I don't want to break the streak. I think I've done it every meeting, but just one quick question on that.
Okay, well, we've, we've blown up the consent agenda by virtue of pulling out one set of minutes, I believe, so we do have to adopt every item independently, correct, Mr. Curry?
No, you can adopt the consent agenda for everything except for those that have been pulled out.
Okay, very good. All right, so we're pulling out accounts payable and the minutes for adoption. Is there anything else we need to pull out?
Just to be clear, you're only pulling out the March 30th minutes, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, so is there a motion for the consent agenda except for, so items three, four, and five of the consent agenda, the supplemental appropriations, Board of Supervisors contingency budget process, and the resolution of appreciation for Jennifer Matthews? Is there a motion to approve those items?
Is it also the minutes for March 11th, March 16th, March 18th, April 2nd, and April 6th?
If we can include those, that would be fine. Do I have a motion to approve those items?
They're moved.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That takes us to the accounts payable item. If you have a question, Mr. Woodson, Mr. Curry?
The minutes come first on the agenda, so it'd probably be, the first topic would be the March 30th.
Oh, I don't have a change with me today, but I will submit a change for the next meeting.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. There's a dialogue in there I wanted to capture a little more completely, and I will, I will get that to you. The accounts payable process, I guess we have a question on that, please.
This is really a question for Mr. Curry. I've mentioned a couple of times since the start of the year, at least my concern on behalf of taxpayers, that too much money is being spent on our outmoded phone system and related expenses, and I was just wondering if you might be able to provide any update on anything you've learned in your ongoing research on the possibility of implementation of a voice-over IP system or something that would reduce those costs?
I can't speak to cost quite yet, but I have been in dialogue with more than one provider who could deploy VoIP phones for our government offices, and I'm looking at a hosted solution rather than one that would put equipment in our facilities because we don't have, we contract for IT, and we're really not that capable of having somebody on-call like right away, even though our contractor does a great job. So it seemed a hosted solution would, would work better for us if we have a good enough pipe to the internet and good enough connectivity in our buildings. It also is a good excuse to fix our network between our buildings, which we, myself and our contractor, have wanted to do for a long time. So I'm beginning that process originally started because there was potential through CARES to help with this, to help with our ability to work away from the office, and a hosted environment helps with that as well, so someone could be working at any building, whether there be their office, their home, some third structure, and be like they were in their office. So that's really all I can offer at this point in time.
I appreciate that. I just, it, again, it just month-to-month seems like we're spending an incredible amount of money on phone services that aren't great, so thank you for that effort.
Are there any other questions relating to accounts payable? I guess this time it would be appropriate for any supervisor that would like to make a declaration, this would be the time to do so.
I guess I do have a question because I'm not going to read that again this month. I have a question for Mr. Goff. Mr. Goff, this week will be five months since the judge's decision has come down in the Bragg case, yet this board has had no interaction with you or Mr. Brown in regard to that.
The next proceeding is set for August 24th, and that is the hearing on whether or not there's going to be any attorney fees awarded, but nothing much has been happened other than us preparing to make that argument come August 24th, and I believe it's at 10:00 a.m., so there hasn't been any proceedings whatsoever.
I believe that there's been quite a bit of traffic back and forth between the parties, that this board has not even been notified about the judge's decision.
I'm not, I don't think I've already heard.
This board has not been notified by you or Mr. Brown, who is supposed to represent us in these proceedings, ever since the judge's decision came down. All we got is one email that refers to the August 24th meeting.
Okay, I think...
We did read about it in the newspaper.
It's my understanding that there was a copy of the judge's decision that was sent out to each one of you. Did you not receive that?
I didn't get it from you, no, sir.
Okay, well, that's the only thing I know of that has been done as far as any other proceedings, is simply to notify the board of what occurred and what the, basically the net outcome of this decision was. There has been no further legal proceeding since the date that the judge sent down his decision.
This is why I have a problem with reading that, that declaration because I don't see how you or Mr. Brown represented me or this board in any of that proceeding for the last five months. We have no communication with you.
Okay. I don't know what to say.
But I did read about it in the newspaper.
Good.
So that's not normally the way that I think that this should be handled with the board.
Okay, well, how would you like it to be handled?
Well, I think that if you worked with the board and you would have notified what was going on, that's why...
As far as I knew, the opinion went out to everybody, so I don't know what further you would want me to do.
When did you send it out?
I have, I have no idea. Shortly after it was handed down by the board.
But there was no communication. It was just a judge's opinion. We were supposed to read it and interpret it for ourselves.
Well, you know, I guess so. I mean, what, what do you want me to do? Because I think whatever I said about it, you probably wouldn't agree with anyway, so...
Well, I didn't, I certainly couldn't agree with what you did in the newspaper because the county theoretically lost part of that.
In my view, we did it, but that's...
But see, there's, there's been no communication. That's what I'm getting at. You should have communicated with this board so that I wouldn't be asked these questions. And since I've had no opportunity to ask these questions, I have to ask you now.
Well, if you've got a specific question about Bragg's one or two decisions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
I would have thought that you, as the attorney, would have hanged forward and had sent it to the board so that we could have, it could have been shared publicly.
I, I just don't see what, what you would want me to say. You know, if you want me to edit for you... And, you know, do you want me to editorialize about the judge's decision or do you want me to give you the judge's decision?
I have a couple of things to answer.
I said, do you, do you want me to editorialize about the...
Now, we'd want you to editorialize it, but I think the public needs a proper explanation of the points that the county may have won or may have lost in that, that process.
In addition to what the judge said?
Some people still don't understand what the judge said. That's why I'm asking you these questions.
Okay.
I don't need to interrupt, but we do have an agenda item dedicated to this later in the meeting that I think might be a more appropriate time to take up this discussion rather than up to the accounts payable headquarter.
I guess so. I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I just...
Well, I, I can understand your frustration, certainly. And it's not that I disagree, but we do have a review of legal matters under page three, and I think that that might be a more appropriate time to do this because we do have a few presentations to get through. And I know some people don't want to be carrying longer than they have to. So I would...
My apologies.
I appreciate that, Mr. Frazier, and we will certainly present this presentation at that time.
So that takes us to the opportunity for anyone that wishes to make a declaration to do so.
Did print copies and place them at each seat?
Thank you. I'll start off. Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3115H, as a Board of Supervisors member, I may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, whose firm provides legal counsel related to the Bragg one case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as a member of the Board of Supervisors. I certify that my involvement and action is as a group of three or more members of the Board of Supervisors, which are affected by the transaction, and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Pursuant of the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3115H, as a Board of Supervisors member, I may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to Bragg one case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as an individual and member of the Board of Supervisors. I certify...
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3115H, as a Board of Supervisors member, I might have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to Bragg one case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as a member of the Board of Supervisors. I certify that my involvement and action is as a group of three or more members of the Board of Supervisors that are affected by the transaction, that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3115H, as a Board of Supervisors member, I may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Bragg one case. The nature of my potential personal interest is in the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as a member of the Board of Supervisors. I certify that my involvement and action is as a group of three or more members of the Board of Supervisors, which are affected by the transaction, and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. And with that, do I have a motion to approve the accounts payable, please?
So moved.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parrish, in a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That takes us to the next items on the agenda presentations. The first presentation we have is a resolution of appreciation for Jennifer Matthews' service on the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I would just like to read, read this to everyone because this is really a momentous milestone, and we are so very grateful for your service, Jennifer. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Whereas Jennifer H. Matthews served the citizens of Rappahannock County for over 29 years on the Rappahannock County Board of Zoning Appeals from September 10th, 1990 until July 8th, 2020. And whereas Ms. Matthews has dedicated, was dedicated to her responsibilities and provided with intelligence, understanding, and integrity, impartial land use stewardship, and whereas the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors, on behalf of all the citizens of Rappahannock County, wishes to express its profound appreciation for her services to the citizens of Rappahannock County and her devotion to the betterment of the county. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors has hereby expressed its highest appreciation to Jennifer H. Matthews for her significant contribution to the county and to commend her for her outstanding service to the citizens of Rappahannock County. And be it further resolved and that this resolution shall be spread across the minutes of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors for all citizens to reflect upon the service and accomplishments of this dedicated public service. Thank you so much, Ms. Matthews.
Thank you.
It's gonna be hard to explain these vast 20 years from now.
No speech, Jennifer?
Thank you. I did say something to the, the chair, and it takes a team to make, a, a good, a policy team to, to, to make the decisions, to listen to the, after you've listened to the facts in front of you. I try, and most of us try to be as objective as possible, bringing in all the, from our readings and looking at the code and following the comprehensive plan. So I do, I do thank you all for this, and it is, it's a very emotional time because I, I thoroughly enjoyed all the time that I was on, on the board. I learned a lot, and I think that the Rappahannock County has profited from that. So thank you very much.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. That takes us to the Rappahannock Rapid and Community Services Annual Report with Mr. LaGrave. Welcome, Jim.
Thank you. I appreciate being back again for newer members of the board. My name is Jim LaGrave.
And I'm sorry to interrupt, but I did also print a copy of the presentations and place them at board member's seat so you could track along.
Thank you, Mr. Curry.
I'm Jim LaGrave. I'm the Executive Director of Rappahannock Rapid and Community Services. We serve as the Community Services Board. I'm sorry, I keep breathing in my mask as I try to talk here. As the Community Services Board and also the Area Agency on Aging for Planning District Nine, which includes the five county region. We are the only combined Community Service Board Area Agency on Aging in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And by Code of Virginia, I am required to present to the Board of Supervisors our performance contract and area plan. This year is a little different, and I do not require any type of approval by the Boards of Supervisors as the Department of Behavioral Health has decided not to update any contracts for this year because of COVID, but rather just extend what was in place. But we are still required to report out to you. So, thanks, Chair. Okay, so fiscal year 2020 in review wasn't all about COVID. So some of this year's accomplishments that I think is important for the Board of Supervisors and community members to know about. And this year, when I said this year, this fiscal year, which has ended on, on July 1st for us, our Board of Supervisors really set about setting some new direction for us as an organization and really wanting to focus on five core areas, increasing or decreasing difficulty or perceived difficulty of access of our services, to continue in that there's a real need for more community outreach and education on what is available through the Community Services Board or Area Agency on Aging. And so often we hear, wouldn't it be nice if this was available only to be told? Well, we do do that. It is available, and community members don't know about those services that we provide. To continue to implement industry best practice and evidence-based practices, to be able to demonstrate that our services are effective for the members of our community, and to be responsive to the changing community needs. And just my two short years that I've been here, we've seen tremendous changes already in our communities. Additionally, this year, we saw the purchase and leasing of the region's first sober living home, and that opened in January of this year in the town of Culpeper, but is available to all members of our five counties. And we were able to purchase that home through donations from the Path Foundation and Culpeper Wellness, and we have leased that home to Oxford House, who is now providing sober living services out of that home. We have completed a brand-new construction of a new behavioral health clinic in Falkir, which will serve a lot of members of Rappahannock County. And I think something that's really important is we did obtain funding to hire what we call a regional opioid response coordinator or director position. And that position really is working to coordinate the responses to our substance abuse crisis in our five county region between all the different players in our community to make sure that we have a coordinated effort. And they came aboard at a really tough time in March of this year, but we're able to complete the application for our area to be considered a drug-free community, which will bring a lot of money to our five county region for enhanced prevention activities in our area, which is desperately needed. And we hope to hear about the success in obtaining that grant in the next month or two. We were able to adjust a lot of our salary scales to be much more market competitive for our employees, which is, which has been critical in our ability to continue to increase services to our community members. We've had a really tough time hiring licensed clinicians, some of those key positions, but with a new salary structure in place, that has improved greatly in the last year. We began a partnership with George Mason University to look at how demographic factors are affecting the success of our treatment programs, and I think we're excited about that. We began a medication-assisted treatment program in the Falkir County Detention Center, where we're actually able to start medication-assisted treatment for inmates in the Falkir County Jail with a substance use disorder because we know the likelihood of overdose from addiction for those members upon release from prison is tremendously higher. Forget the number, it's 200 or something percent higher in those first two weeks of release. So we're now actually able to get those people on medication and treatment before they ever leave the jail. And again, we're seeing very positive early results from that on recidivism and some of those things. And have actually been in discussions about sending that into some of the other local jails and, and regional prisons. We completed renovation of our Bradford Road Office, Laviary, which is desperately needed. We have now been able to expand peer support services. Peer services are someone with a lived experience, and we do know that one of the best ways we get people into services, particularly mental health and substance use disorder services, is if they have initial contact with a peer. And so we've been funding programs at the emergency rooms where a peer we contract with will go out if they're in overdose or some, some services like that. And it's really been very helpful and effective to get people into treatment. We received organizational compliance with what's called the Home and Community-Based Services Waiver. It's kind of a technical thing, but most people don't realize our biggest budget item is services to adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities, and the Medicaid rules are changing. And in order for us to continue to be a provider, we needed to be able to receive this organizational compliance. So it was a lot of work internally within the organization, but a very important milestone for us. We've expanded some of our housing programs and been able to obtain 20 more vouchers for permanent supported housing, which is a program to help people who have, have had long-term chronic issues with stable housing. And it provides a lot of case management support for that. We have been come regular participants in the Rappahannock Roundtable Conversation, which is really, I think, been an excellent resource to bring all the community providers in Rappahannock County to discuss services, to problem solve. And out of that, we've hit, we've seen things like, we have a plan that was shorted out by COVID, but it's now starting back up again soon, where members and volunteers of the food pantry will act as ambassadors, train ambassadors on services that they can receive in our organization because they're known by community members. And we think that, again, will very much help people get services. And we're seeing other types of ongoing community partnerships where, you know, with CCLC and SPACE for Services for children. Some of those types of things, I think, are very good. We're seeing the expansion of drug courts. You've had LINK now in this county for about a year and a half. LINK is a program to keep kids out of foster care by intensive case management with families that, with a parent with a substance use disorder. And again, that service, I think, has been very effective in our county here. We've seen alternative transportation. Alternative transportation started this year where someone who has been in a mental health crisis and has to go to a state hospital typically before alternative transportation came in, it was the local law enforcement jurisdiction's responsibility to transport that person wherever that might be around the state for that hospital placement. Alternative transportation now provides an alternative where that is not falling back on local law enforcement, and it's just saving a lot of local resources, especially in our smaller counties. We've implemented a new rental assistance program where we've got new vouchers for housing programs for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities to obtain housing. And so a lot was happening at the beginning of the year, but, you know, I say it wasn't all about COVID, but let's face it, this year has been all about COVID. And so for us as an organization, starting in March, we closed all of our congregated sites and offices. We were able to implement predominantly remote staff workforce practices. All staff who were assigned to site-based services were reassigned to community outreach to members of our community. We converted most of our outpatient behavioral health services to telehealth services. And one of the really interesting things about that was really we saw a much lower rate of no-shows when we went to telehealth medicine as we were seeing when people were having to come to our site-based clinics. And we've seen very high levels of satisfaction among clinicians and clients who've been receiving telehealth services. And I would also echo, it's probably the easiest and best way for us to expand services in counties like Rappahannock where we know services are difficult. So whatever can be done to enhance our broadband access, because that has been the biggest area for us, I would heartily support as well. We did have to close our senior centers, including the one in the Scrabble School, and began instead of home, site-based community meals to our seniors, went to a home-delivered meal program. Before we started reopening our senior centers a couple of weeks ago, we were delivering about 1,300 meals every single week for free to our five county region. As an organization, we took advantage of all of the available financial relief efforts that we were able to take advantage of. We saw no staff layoffs or furloughs during this time and have been able to maintain agency financial stability, and we insured and protected 375 jobs during this point in time. So with all that as a backdrop, you know, this year's budget was really very challenging for us to put together. The uncertainty of the pandemic. We also have a lot of uncertainty over mid-year possible funding reductions from the state. And we had remote staff teams, so we had no one in the same room trying to put together a budget, which was tough. But we did. Additionally, we had priorities. We wanted to continue to make sure we were taking care of our employees, so we started with the priority of a 4% increase for all of our staff. We also know our healthcare is not as competitive as it needs to be, so we did say we want a flat healthcare contribution for our employees. We were very conservative in all of our estimates on revenues and expenses because we just don't know of the uncertainty of what is happening. We also wanted to continue to work on our capital budget plan to address needed property issues as they have been put off for far too long as an organization. And so when we did this, we were very conservative in staff occupancy rates. Any discretionary spending within the organization was pretty much eliminated except for in areas of information technology. If we had money, we put it into our IT budget this year. Also with the backdrop that no services would be discontinued or rolled back. And then also, we also wanted to reclassify some existing positions to better meet those board priorities that were identified early in the year. So for this year, our budgeted revenue is about 26, $27.6 million, which is about a 1.5... So for this year, our budgeted revenue is about $27.6 million, which is about a 1.5% increase from the previous year. Local resources, and I do want to thank all of our members of our Boards of Supervisors for your support this year. We did see about $435,000 in increased local support from our five counties. We did see an increase of support from the Department of Behavioral Health of about $600,000. The real challenge that we have with money from the Department of Behavioral Health is it is all restricted. So if we get $200,000 new money from the department for a particular service, that money must go to that service. I cannot spread it into any other cost increases. So if my healthcare costs went up, I cannot use any of that money for additional healthcare costs, except for as related to that program. In our area of being conservative, we did reduce our projected fees this year's budget by just under $1 million. And again, similar, we did see a federal fund increase this year of about $550,000. The biggest part of that was some relaxed restrictions on carryover funds of federal dollars into the new fiscal year. So that really helped us out greatly in balancing this year's budget. As you know, so our expenses are also at 27.6%. Our personnel expenses went up about $388,000. We added nine full-time positions, and you can see the other ones, I don't need to go through all of them, you have them in front of you. Just graphically, where does our money come from? Again, you see about 26% from state funding, about 10%, which is what it should be. COVID Virginia requires 10% local, so 10% local funds, and fees and other sources. And where does our money go? As a human service agency, we're predominantly personnel expenses. And our projected outcomes as we submit in our performance contract, in our behavioral health services, you will see the different categories of services that we provide and the prospective number of unduplicated people that we will support under those categories. So the category on the left is for the five-county region. The numbers on the right are for what we project for Rappahannock County. And I think it's valuable, some of them are a little more specific, where you might not have anybody that we project from this county, based on the size of the county, that's fully understandable. But we do still see that there are things like case management services. We still don't have nearly the penetration in Rappahannock County that we need to have, because we know there are people out there who need that service. And here you see, these are individuals with Developmental Disability Services, same numbers, same formulas. Members with Substance Use Disorder Services. I just thought this was interesting, just so you can see the impact and the amount of prevention activities that we have provided during the past year. And emergency services are crisis services. So you'll see we'll support, you know, we'll do 32 emergency crisis calls in Rappahannock County this year. And our aging services, very similar numbers. You see, we have 42 people who are regular attendees of our senior center, and you can see transportation to 31 members, and we have 41 volunteers. And if there's any questions, I am happy to answer any questions members of the boards might have.
Thank you, Mr. LeGraff.
I got a question. Is there any reason that you can think of or know of why the DUI referrals in Falkir County over the last nine years have been cut in half, and in Rappahannock County has increased by two and a half times?
The what referrals?
This was in your ASAP.
That publication's actually not from Mr. LeGraff. That was sent to the Board members.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
But he may have a good answer for you.
So the question was about DUI?
Yeah, DUI referrals in Falkir County have gone, you know, come and cut in half from 298 to 147, and in Rappahannock County, they've gone from, since 2010, they've gone from 13 to 31. And I didn't know if this would just be a stricter judge, or, you know, more...
I'm sorry, I just, not the world I live in, unfortunately.
Okay, I was just thinking, there's a big difference here, I was just curious.
Any other questions?
I had a quick question. I was just wondering if you could elaborate a little bit on the home that you purchased, and you said you're working with Oxford House?
Yes.
Can you just describe the scope of activities that occur there?
Sure, sure.
And how it fits into your overall service offering?
Sure, yeah, okay. So just as a frame of reference, you know, our five-county region has substance use disorder ratios and rates that are significantly higher than most other areas in the state of Virginia. I've been here now about two years in this role. When we got here, one of my questions was, what are our options for individuals with a substance use disorder for supported housing? And in our five-county region, there are zero. We have, we run what's called Boxwood, which is a residential treatment program, a 28-day program. But upon graduation of Boxwood, there is no local place for someone to go who needs a continual level of support. So one of the, the only recovery evidence-based practice by the federal government is what's called Oxford House. Oxford House is actually a separate company, they're based in Maryland. They are a peer-run, a peer-supervised home. So the real challenge for them, and by contrast, Winchester is a town, I think, has 13 or 14 alone in the city of Winchester. We have zero in a five-county region.
Wow.
No, we have one. So the real challenge in talking to Oxford was, Oxford Homes are self-sufficient. The members who live there pay the rents, they pay the food, there is no public support of an Oxford House. But the challenge was, in our area, real estate is hard and expensive. So in order for Oxford to come into our area to run one of these homes, they needed really to find a rental, which is affordable, which is almost impossible, or purchase a house, which they just don't have funds to do that. And so we went out to a couple of our local foundations, we also had some private philanthropy, and what happened was, the money was given to RRCS. We went out and purchased a home that now we lease to Oxford at a very submarket rate, and they now are running a sober living home at that location.
Then how many people maximum would be in that?
In that house, I believe that house is eight.
For a five-county region?
Yes. But I will say, that was the first. It is our intention and the intention of the people that lent us the money for Oxford House, was we received enough in funds to completely purchase the home. We are in the process, now it's been open, what, five, six months? We will use the rent from Oxford. We have a small, established reserve fund that when we get that, so if it needs a new furnace or a roof or something along those lines, we'll be able to pay for that. Once we get above that amount, we will reinvest it in more homes. And so hopefully, this is just the first one. But we are continuing to work with other partners just to open more. They are, they don't cost our community anything, and they are the best model out there right now for people in recovery. The statistics on people who go to Oxford and relapsing rates and those types of things are so much better than the general population.
Thanks for that explanation.
Did I understand that some of your day-use facilities are opening back up?
Yes.
Okay.
We reopen our senior centers, I think it was two weeks ago, but it was off a week, so it might be three, on a very, very limited basis. We also reopened our cycle social day program and our day program for adults. Again, they're all in various, you know, the governor's guidelines would allow 50% capacity, we're at about 20. Honestly, one of the biggest challenges we have is transportation, because so many of the people who use our day programs rely on us for transportation, and I think everyone's familiar with our vans, they see them around everywhere. Those vans can typically seat 11 individuals, but because of seating guidelines for those vans, they can only hold three. So our ability to bring people into services has been very small. You know, I would also say, while we've had positive tests for staff, we have yet to have any positive tests, I wish I would knock on wood, in any of our congress programs. You know, we serve very vulnerable populations, we have residential programs, and we've had no positive cases in any of those.
Very good, thank you, Mr. LeGraff. Any other questions?
Chair Smith, thank you very much for the presentation. I'm looking at page 21, the Area Agency on Aging service outcomes, and if I look at it the same way we've talked about these other tracks, does that mean you have 41 volunteers from Rappahannock County?
Yeah. We have, if you go back, our volunteer program is amazing, I think 287 volunteers in our five-county region who help our aging programs. I remember last year, the dollar value of our volunteers was like $780,000 or something like that, using the federal government allowable rates for volunteer hours. A lot of those are driving volunteers, mere delivery, some of those types of things, but yeah.
And then one other question, are you seeing any trends that you're concerned about, specifically for Rappahannock County, out of the interest?
Well, it is interesting. There are no specific trends that overly worry me. I think our trend in Rappahannock is the fact, what worries me, I think, most is that we haven't seen an upsurge, and which is one of the reasons we're doing things with like the Food Pantry, where we're training, you know. We are the Community Service Board, I think for many members of our community, we're still considered government, even though we're a private organization. And so for a lot of those members of our community, I think the trust issue is still a challenge, but they trust the Food Pantry, so we're hopeful that that will start leading to more people accepting us for services. The biggest challenge that, you know, we've seen locally here in Rappahannock is those members who had trouble with technology maintaining services. I just heard a report, actually, on the drive over this afternoon. Our total number of clients who we have seen went down about 7% in the last quarter, although the total number of like scripts and those types of things went up. So it's a very small decrease in the number of people that are being served, but I think they're being served well.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you so much, Mr. LeGraff. We very much appreciate your visit today.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care, everybody.
All right, the next item on the agenda is black bear health update, which is something that Supervisor Donna Hay had requested, so we welcome DWR District Wildlife Biologist David Kocca.
Kocca.
Kocca, okay. Thank you very much, sir. Sorry to botch your name. Thank you for joining us today.
It's not the first time it's happened. I'm a district wildlife biologist with the Department of Wildlife Resources, we just changed our name, the legislature changed our name effective July 1st, from the Department of Game and Fisheries. This is my 31st fun-filled year working for the agency. You can go to the next slide. So, give you a little perspective, we are a relatively small agency, roughly about 400 employees statewide. I'm one of 14, when we're fully staffed, district biologists. I cover, in addition to Rappahannock County, you can't see it on the screen, but basically those teal-green counties are my counties that I cover. I cover five counties, and I'm de facto covering those kind of brownish-green counties, because we had a retirement a year and a half ago that hasn't been filled yet. So I'm not in the county very frequently. Also, same thing, more or less, in terms of law enforcement, our CPOs, we currently have four CPOs that are covering a five-county district that they work, because one of them's out on maternity leave and we had a retirement. Okay, you can go to the next slide. So, I was asked to talk about mange, what's going on relative to mange in black bears. What is mange? Go ahead. It's a contagious skin disease, but it's caused by a parasitic mite. It causes alopecia, which is a fancy name for basically loss of hair, crusted skin, and lesions. Causes poor body condition. Mange in black bears can be broken into three different types, basically. There's, go ahead, demodetic mange, there's also ursa coptes, which is basically a bear-specific form, and then lastly is sarcoptic, which is the one most people are familiar with. It's the one that's most frequently associated with foxes and coyotes. It's been on the landscape for eons. There's a lot of stuff we don't understand yet about black bears and mange, but that's what we're generally seeing in Virginia. You can only tell them really if you scrape the skin and look at the mites under a microscope. I'm going to focus on sarcoptic, because that's what we are seeing predominantly. Go ahead. They are caused by this little mite, like I said, you have to look under a microscope. Go ahead. Basically, what happens is, the adult more or less buries under your skin, under the animal's skin, and then lays eggs, and those eggs mature under skin and eventually come out. But basically, there's a variety of animals, both domestic and wild, that are susceptible to sarcoptic mange, including pets and humans. Your dog is susceptible to it, you are susceptible to it, several are stat, like myself, have already had one case, but don't really encourage people to do that. But if you have a normal human immune system, about a week and a half, two weeks, something like that, they basically are gone, but it's just not a whole lot of fun. And the common hosts are red fox and coyotes, that we typically have seen them historically. Go ahead. That's what it looks like when you're a bear and you have a severe case of sarcoptic mange. They've lost hair, they get a really crusty skin, they live a very unhappy life, is the best way I can describe it. You can go ahead. So prior to 2019, we have been experiencing sarcoptic mange, you won't be able to see it, my laser won't show up there, but basically in Frederick County predominantly, where most of our cases were. We had other ones here and there, but that's where the vast majority, during that period of time, from 2014 to 2018, we only recorded about 43 cases of it in those counties. But again, predominantly in Frederick County. You can go to the next one. Since 2019, we've seen about a 300% increase in those cases, and it's now encompassing about a 12-county area. It's like a daily thing in terms of me getting emails relative to bears that are exhibiting mange, predominantly sarcoptic. This is already sort of out of date, but as of the end of July, it was 148 cases that we've recorded in that period of time. You'll see that Rappahannock is one of those many counties that experiences. Go ahead, the next slide. Basically, Pennsylvania's been experiencing this for over two decades in their bears, and that's where it generally has been existing in their state. I don't have a date of when this slide was put together, so I don't know exactly what year it was produced. Actually, one of our most recent hires worked on a mange project in Pennsylvania as part of her graduate work. So she knows a lot about it, a lot more than I currently do. You can go to the next one. So basically, one question a lot of people ask is, why don't you treat bears that are experiencing this mange? Well, basically, we've done that on a very small scale. We captured several bears that had mange. We, in conjunction with the Wildlife Center of Virginia, we treated them. It's a very involved process. You have to treat them several times, you have to keep checking their skin for mites until they're finally clean. A number of those bears, basically, then we released, we released all of them, but they were fully haired when we released them. Then basically, what we found is, a number of them basically ended up with similar or more severe cases of mange in the future, one or two years post. This guy basically was a bear that we actually caught in the county by coincidence about a year ago. We treated him, he was clean, we put a radio collar on him and ear tags, and basically, here we are, a year, just over a year later, and he has another case of mange. So it is not something we're going to be doing at this point in time. We are not doing that. It's just, it's too, it's like, we're just delaying the inevitable for these bears and the intensity. This is a very busy slide, but basically, this was a postcard that was put together in Frederick County, and I believe it was mailed out through the, some mailing that the county took advantage of in terms of, maybe it was water bills or whatever, but basically to get information out to people. The biggest thing that we recommend to people, in addition to not being legal to feed bears, is to not have them getting foods like bird feeders and things like that, because it congregates bears, and hence, if one of them has it, they'll be dropping those mites and they share it with the other guys. So it's highly contagious. You can go to the next slide. When they get to those later stages, this was taken on a front porch of a house, not in Rappahannock County, but this is what we see. And these are bears that they will spend, because they're so unhappy, in my mind, and a lot of this is speculation, they're so unhappy, they're so uncomfortable, they really aren't concerned about foods a lot of times, and they... concerned about foods a lot of times, and they will spend crawling people's decks in their dog houses, under porches, just about any kind of structures, whatever. And they're really oblivious to people. They don't care about them. They're not trying to hurt anybody. They're just feeling unhappy, and they're just looking for a place to hang out. So what can residents do if they see what they suspect to be a bear with mange? Is try to get some decent pictures. You can see this bear has the scaly skin on it, and he's sitting there basically on somebody's front porch. You can remove any of those potential food sources. Again, it's illegal to be feeding these guys and have bears come to your bird feeder anytime, but basically, if they're eating these foods, they're, in addition to them getting rewards, they're passing potentially those mites on to other bears. And then basically, we have a Virginia Wildlife Conflict Helpline. You contact them, send them the pictures, and then basically eventually they come to me or one of my compadres in terms of the other counties that are covered. Basically, what we do at this point is we, if we confirm that it's a bear like that, we either directly or we can give permission to the landowner basically to euthanize that bear, basically effectively putting it down and burying it. That's the best way we can handle it at this point, trying to minimize the spread of it. Again, we're trying to figure out a lot more. We're working with other agencies in the region, but also through some researchers at Virginia Tech to try to understand more about why this is kind of blowing up in the bear world in the past decades in Pennsylvania, but in Virginia in the past five to 10 years. And basically, the next thing is if he was showed, there's a brief video. Again, this will show you how uncomfortable these guys feel. This happened, this was not in Rappahannock, but this is kind of, again, a typical experience. This was on the day Charles Orchard, Peach Orchard in Albemarle County, and you'll see the mangey bear, hardly has any hair on it. It is walking around, all the people associated with the house, basically where you go in to decide if you're going to be picking orchards, where their store is and all this, and basically there's like 100 people around there that day. And basically, of course, they call me saying, what are you going to do about this bear? So that's how uncomfortable they feel. This guy was not going to hurt anybody. He's just unhappy with life. So that just gives you that example. So from there, we just flip to my slide that basically says, you can ask me any questions and I'll try to answer them.
I kind of conclude then when you said that they first appeared in Frederick County. I was going to ask the question, was there any correlating outbreaks in West Virginia or nearby Maryland?
Yes.
But then you said it was basically coming down from Pennsylvania.
Pennsylvania's had it, like I said, for a number of decades. I can't speak for other southern states, but West Virginia's seeing the same thing. I just talked with one of my counterparts over there a couple of weeks ago. We were kind of comparing notes about things. And again, we talked about the fact that these guys, at that point in time, are so unhappy. And even if we try to trap those bears, because let's say a landowner says, I can't put that bear down, whatever, it's unsafe, whatever, I can, I'll set a trap for it, but I'm having a poor success at catching those animals. Even that guy with the collar on, he was picked up on a camera, his battery is stopped working on the collar at this point. He was picked on a camera on a person's property just inside of Rappahannock. And basically, I went and set a trap there, and it sat there for a week, and basically the bear never came back plus, but a lot of them will be there and they just don't, there's no interest in that food item that I am using as a bait. And we have people talk about, oh yeah, we see the bear, he has walked by your trap, and the only time he stopped was a scratch. So anyhow, but the other states, I haven't reached out. I'm pretty sure Maryland is probably seeing a similar thing, but this is not, we're not the only bad place in town in terms of relative to mange in bears. Yes, sir.
Mr. Stone, I think it's Donna Hay had a question.
I just saw on Facebook today, of all places, a mange fox that had been picked up and taken to one of the wildlife centers, and they have rehabbed the fox. And I'm just wondering if the fox is the carrier in a lot of cases. Aren't we just creating a circle?
Yeah. I can't speak for the wildlife, all the different wildlife rehabilitators in the state. We do permit those individuals. I can tell you that the Wildlife Center, if we have a bear that we, in our possession that we're going to take there for some reason, the first question they will ask is if it has mites, basically, they don't want it. And so I doubt there's, that most rehabilitators are going to be wanting to accept an animal like that, because again, whether it's a fox or coyote or whatever, they are highly contagious. And so they might treat that animal, but at the same time, they might be spreading mites to others. So it's not typical, I would think, that we would see that, but they can.
I have friends with pets that are outside at night a lot of times, that are now very concerned that this is going to happen to them, to their animals. Any words of wisdom on that?
Well, like I said, sarcoptic has been on the planet for eons. The biggest thing I tell you, if you've seen an animal like this on your property and it's coming and walked past your deck or whatever like that, and then it ventures off and you never see it again, I would recommend there's a product from Raid, and I can send you the little poop sheet that we give people, basically talking about how highly contagious it is, but basically, it has like a 25% level of DEET in it, and it says it'll kill mites. I would recommend that you spray those areas that you are concerned about, that our bears have been, because again, it can be passed to your pets or to you if you are so unfortunate. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Yeah, I can tell you that we did have a bear in Flint Hill this weekend, and David was kind enough to take the text with the photo of the bear and give the go-ahead to put it down, because it was in very bad condition, and it's just heartbreaking. And he was going after the pear trees in the middle of town, basically.
Yeah.
So thank you very much for that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
To that point, I live back in Harris Hollow, close to the park boundary. We have a ton of bears. So if we do encounter one of these, what would the procedure be to determine what we should do about it? Contact you?
Yeah, basically, like I said, the typical thing, we go through the helpline. They have an 800 number. You can call them. And basically, we don't do anything without pictures confirming what we suspect, because, you know, you do have bears that they just naturally shed their coat in the summer.
Right.
And they regrow it. So anyhow, there's certain things we look for, especially the crusty skin and things like that. Now, if it's on private lands, whatever, then I can directly do certain things. You know, if it's on park service property, that's their deal.
Totally different.
You know, so, but anyhow. And we share information with them. I've sent them our maps fairly recently to the biologists on the park.
Would you, for Rappahannock County specifically, my understanding is the bear population's been, and hopefully I'm right about this, has been doing pretty well year to year. Could you just give us a baseline for what our bear population looks like now in terms of total numbers, and to what extent this mange issue will take that population down significantly, or if this is sort of the natural course of things with a balanced population?
First of all, I can't give you X number of bears in a county. We manage bears in kind of groups of counties.
Okay.
Let me, I'll back up. We have a black bear management plan. We revise that plan every 10 years. We're in the process right now. And we do some projections in terms of populations. I can tell you that most of my counties and a lot of the counties in kind of the northwest part of the state, for years, people wanted us to stabilize bear populations. And basically, then, a few years ago, people in those counties basically wanted us to start reducing bear numbers. And so we have been moving towards that goal, but we're only a year or two into that, and so we don't, it takes a while to assess that over time. I can tell you that just as a general idea, you know, the past probably five to 10 years statewide, we have more, first of all, we have more bears on the landscape than we probably had since people initially got off the boat in Virginia. When I first started 30 years ago, our statewide harvest was somewhere in the 300 to 500 bears statewide. Our legal harvest now for the past five to 10 years has been about 2,500 bears statewide by hunters. And then last year, we killed somewhere, I can't remember the exact figure, but somewhere around 3,500 bears. So that's a function of us increasing opportunities, but also there's more bears out there. So long-term, what this impact will be from mange, I have no earthly idea. I would assume that we're going to see some population impacts by that, but that's an assumption that we can't, we don't have any real data to hang on that. Pennsylvania has not, I don't know that they've documented big increases in their bear numbers. All our states around the east are dealing with the same thing in terms of bear populations increased, and now more and more people are wanting them to be stabilizing or decreasing bear numbers across the states.
Will mange play any significant role in adjustment of harvest numbers or targeted harvest numbers?
Not in the immediate future, but that may come out through this bear management plan and through research with our cooperators at Virginia Tech. So I'd have to defer that one for a bit, so.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks a lot. It's a really good presentation.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Kocca.
You're welcome.
That takes us to the next item on the agenda, the item G1, the appointment to the Rappahannock County Water and Sewer Authority. Mr. Curry, if you would be so kind to queue that up, please.
Yes, as the information in the packet states, there is a vacancy coming at the, came at the end of July for Mr. Frytag. He serves until a new person is appointed, and the Water and Sewer Authority members are appointed by the Board of Supervisors. These appointments are not by district. Of course, they serve the authority, which is only located specifically in Piedmont. The appointments run for four years and all have an expiration date of July 31. So an appointment for this position would expire in July 31, 2024. The Board adopted your new policy on appointments, and included in that was essentially a requirement advertised in the paper for certain positions unless the Board waived that requirement. And the authority is one of those bodies for which advertisement was required in that policy. So if the Board is of the mind to make an appointment tonight, I would just ask you to do that. In the motion, you waive the advertisement requirement in the same motion or a separate motion to making that appointment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Curry.
If there were no objections, I could make a motion that we would waive the requirement.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. We have a motion to waive the requirement. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Donahay. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Do we have any other motions in regard to this application and vacancy?
Madam Chair, I had a question that came up. I had an exchange with Mr. Frytag over the weekend by phone. He just sold his property on Benvenu Road, and I initially informed the Board, Mr. Curry, Mr. Goff, that I understood from that telephone conversation, Mr. Frytag was going to continue living in the county. I've since learned that his address will be on Holly Springs Road, which is to the direct south of the road that leads to the Amisville Refuse and Recycling Facility. And so I've concluded that he might be actually residing right on the line between Rappahannock and Culpeper Counties and possibly having an address in Rappahannock, I mean, in Culpeper County. And so I just want to make sure that we're all clear on what, if any, residency requirements might be in place for appointee. I will say, Mr. Frytag, I believe, replaced me on the Water and Sewer Authority. He's done an outstanding job. I have all interest, at least from where I sit, that he continue. He's been a huge contributor to the improvement of the administration of that system. So I just want to make sure that we dot our i's and cross our t's and make sure that we're not running afoul of any A rules regarding appointments.
If I could interject, there is a small section of Holly Springs that is in Rappahannock, but you're not aware which side he's going to be on?
Yeah, I contacted him this morning, and unfortunately, I don't, still don't have direct information about exactly where he resides. And yeah, and I'm aware of that too, because the line is so close. I just don't want to do anything incorrect here.
Is there a residency requirement for appointment on authority?
I put that question to Mr. Goff after looking at your ordinance, Section 57-2, which is silent on the matter, and tracked that back to the state code, which also appears to be silent on the matter. Mr. Goff's thought was that probably should be a county resident to be on one of your But neither of us had any code language really to get us there.
Would it be advisable to just hold the appointment until we have further information? I think that probably wouldn't be a bad idea.
Yeah, again, he's an excellent contributor. And so if there's a path for him to continue serving just for the stability of that Board, and we don't run afoul of any requirement that is clear on its face, then I think we ought to do it just for the sake of the folks who benefit from that authority and its work. So maybe we could defer. I mean, he still resides on Benvenu Road in the interim period, so it's not a question until he moves.
Right.
So is there any action to be taken regarding this agenda item this afternoon?
I don't think so. I mean, in my view, it seems that we should just wait, try to figure out exactly where he lives, and then proceed thereafter. So we could defer, I suppose, to our next regular meeting.
Or it may be resolved by your work session that you plan to have.
Sorry?
And maybe resolved by the work session you plan to have, and you could take care of it then as well.
Okay.
Do we require a motion to table to move on, or can we just?
I don't think so.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Put a pin in this for now.
Thank you, Mr. Wither.
Thank you. That takes us to the next item on the agenda, Sperryville Improved Pedestrian Safety and Traffic Calming. This is an item that I had asked be added to the agenda. It is something that we had a presentation on at last month's meeting. I just wanted to make the Board aware that I had circled back to engage some of the other folks that live in the village that had not been contacted, and also to pull in our Planning Commission member, Mary Catherine Ishi. And I do intend to have something in writing by the September meeting in terms of a proposal to bring forward to improve things in concert with VDOT. I did work with Mr. Nesbit. I contacted him several times throughout the month. Then he was able to get the speed, it's not exactly a variable speed indicator sign as you enter on 522 into the village, but it is a lit sign, so it definitely is more attention grabbing than your normal speed limit sign. And I did hear from some folks in the village that that did seem to be a deterrent to speeding over the weekend. So that will be in place for several weeks, at least two weeks, possibly longer. And there will be more forthcoming on that at the September meeting. And that's all the update. I just wanted to keep everyone in the loop. Does anyone have any questions? All right. That takes us to the CARES Act CRF Distribution Second Allocation from the Commonwealth. Mr. Curry, if you please?
Very late in the agenda preparation process, we learned from the state that we will receive a second allocation of funds, the equivalent in value to the first round. So I wanted to provide an opportunity for the Board to understand that and then provide direction on how you would like to move forward with allocating those additional funds. You can do that at this meeting. You can decide to do that at an upcoming work session, wanting feedback from the Board.
What's our deadline? Is there a deadline?
We need to spend the money by December 30th, 2020.
Very good.
If I could, Madam Chair, I hate to just keep jumping the gun here, but if I don't say something when I first think of it, I'll forget it till next week.
Please go ahead, Mr. Frazier.
So I just realized, reading some of the local papers, that Orange County has already decided that they're going to invest quite a bit of that second round of funding in broadband accessibility for the community. And I wonder why we couldn't consider that here. It may not be something that we can decide today at this meeting or how we would even do that, but we did take that up at the hotspot in Sperryville, but we haven't provided any money for that anywhere else in the community. So there's that, and I think Orange is also contributing directly from their Board somehow, directly to the fire departments. They're not using some third party to do that.
We certainly can provide to the fire companies for public health matters, and I'd be happy to reach out to Mr. Voorhees and see his strategy there. Regarding broadband, Fokker is investing a significant amount of money into broadband as well. Both Fokker and Orange had well-established programs, public-private programs already in place, and those vehicles were readily available for investment. Our problem is we don't have that public-private agreement. Our problem is we don't have that public-private agreement in place.
I appreciate that, and I, I appreciate you bringing that up, but I just wondered if maybe we couldn't enlarge it immediately upon the hotspot idea or something, because certainly it's not enough money for fiber optic burial or anything.
Yeah, I saw some correspondence today regarding the hotspot and I think Sperryville Community Alliance is walking that back some, because they're not quite ready for it. So, the board may have to reallocate those funds as well.
Just an idea.
It's a great idea.
I, I would love to find a way to effectively invest dollars into expanded broadband internet for citizens.
Absolutely.
I'm just grasping at how we can make that happen, not, not due to the rules, but just actually find an investment partner that could do it.
I wonder if the size of a program like that would be something that the Regional Commission would be willing to take on for us?
They might. The biggest issue is probably timing in December 30th. And, and that could change with the federal government. We don't, as they're negotiating round four, they could reach back and modify the rules for the CARES Act, and I note that in the narrative here. They, they could change the deadlines, they could change the prohibition to use the funding for revenue replacement for counties, they could do any number of things. So, the board could allocate all these dollars or try to hold back, but there's, there's risk involved, because you definitely want to have them invested in time so they can be spent by the time we get to December 30th.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Witten.
You and Mr. Curry did an outstanding job, I think, with our recent CARES Act allocation-related special meeting and moving it along and focusing the discussion. I think it also gave a targeted format for interested parties to come and speak publicly. I wonder if we couldn't take a similar approach here? Because at least for me, it was a huge benefit to just be able to focus on that single task in one session and then letting the public know in advance that our discussion will be limited to that one task of allocating CARES Act money. And it seems like the timing described expenditures by December 30th would still allow us to do something like that during the month of August and move this along in, in a way that makes sure that we don't miss an opportunity to spend what's been provided to us.
At the pleasure of the board, I know the board is, is hoping to schedule a work session for August for building matters. Maybe you want to reshuffle the deck and do this instead of that, or have two work sessions. I would just need to have enough time to notice meetings and make sure we have a venue.
What's the, what's the schedule for the building-related discussion? Is that, is that yet, or?
The intent, I believe, was to have that be in the third Monday, the 17th.
Okay.
And that's a topic, as we get to the end of the agenda, with how you end this meeting, whether you recess it to that date, time, place specific, or?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I believe that there's a lot of information that we still have to gather as to how to spend this money. I think if there are needs of working families, parents that have two, parent, or families that have two parents working outside the home, and we need to figure out some childcare options for those families, I think that should very much be a priority as well. I think broadband is, would be a good use of the money. I think the other thing we've got to figure out is how to get this money directly into the hands of our fire and rescue companies. I, I think there's got to be a creative way to do that. And I don't know what it is, but I think we need to find it and figure it out.
Yep.
Because they are hurting, they are not okay.
Might I suggest that we, would it be possible for the work session that's already contemplated to make this the focus of that meeting and shift building discussion maybe to the fourth Monday of August?
Very reluctant to do that, because Wiley Wilson has already committed to that date that they're available.
Okay.
And I'm not entirely sure that all the facts that we need to have that discussion will be in order at that point. So, I would like to take it up at the September meeting perhaps, but if there, if it is all together earlier, we could have a special meeting or another work session and go through it at that time.
Are there certain tasks or questions you would like me to attempt to answer between now and then?
I'm, I'm really having a hard time getting a handle on how other counties are seemingly finding ways to get money to fire and rescue, and that seems to elude us.
Well, we, we definitely know we can do it through small, for, for revenue replacement or a business interruption, we can do it through small, small business grant program, we know that. For public health matters related to PPE and cleaning and things like that, we know we can definitely do that. I'm just not confident and haven't talked to anybody else who, who have shown me that you can provide revenue directly to a VFR for business interruption. But I'm very willing to ask further and broader and wider.
Well, I hear that Madison County has taken on some things that are very inventive, and it seems like maybe Orange County has as well, in terms of broadband in Orange County, but fire and rescue in Madison County. So, I, I mean, I feel like I'm just, haven't heard the full conversation about how these other counties are able to do things.
As some are buying public safety radios, for example, you could probably get there if it's a county asset and it helps. It has to be, you know, directly related to COVID, and we probably could make that case. But all of us, there's risk involved, and at the end of the day, if the auditors don't believe that you follow the rules, then you might be given money back. And so as long as we're, we understand the risk and we think it's worth it, then we go forward.
I think to Mr. Frazier's point, maybe it'd be worthwhile just to get a summary of, of specifically how Falkir County, and you mentioned Orange County also on the broadband front? Just to understand what the mechanisms were for them to be able to feed money into their systems, so that we at least know what it looks like once you have some kind of utility or authority established for broadband purposes.
Broadband, Falkir has, already has a relationship with a provider. They already have a, a program where they, Falkir subsidizes that provider on a new tower, and they're just celebrating schedule.
They already have an authority.
Yeah. And, and they have agreements in place, or just, the schedule was for five years, they're just cranking it up, pulling everything forward.
And Mr. Curry and I were on a phone call with Richmond early when the CARES funding started, and trying to find out a way that these funds could be used for broadband, and that's, that's the problem we're running into, is they were telling us that if it was something to do with COVID and something you could do quickly with, that was a COVID-related issue, then it was usable, but to start a brand, brand-new broadband program, not so much. Unless it's changed.
Any other directions?
One question I have, Madam Chair, Mr. Patrick Finn with Wakefield County Day, or Country Day School, I met for the first time today. And he, as you see in your packet, brought some numbers of issues that their school is having to deal with with regards to COVID. I don't know if it makes sense for Mr. Curry to research non-public schools, so the private school side of things for funding. Obviously, we have many or multiple in the county that could potentially need some funding as well, just with regards to COVID needs.
That's a very interesting question. It's, it's a nonprofit, like many other nonprofits that we have, and we're confident that they could receive funding through a small business grant program. Can we directly fund any nonprofit for other reasons? It's a, it's a very good question. And just the fact that this is educational, that's also a very good question.
Madam Chair, do you mind if Dr. Grimsley speaks?
No, please go ahead, Dr. Grimsley. Could you use the microphone, please?
Yes, through the Public Schools CARES Act funding, you should have received a letter about set aside funding for specific COVID-related expenses in a private school setting, so that can be used that way. So we do have a set aside for our private schools, kind of like your equitable set aside for the county and the city of Little Washington, so, the town of Little Washington. So the similar process works for us, and we have meaningful federal program consultation to have set asides for most of our federal programs that way. So if that helps.
So if we wanted to engage us, we could do it through the, the public school system? Is that what you're saying?
I would start there, because there's specific criteria that it has to reach, and that was the intent of the School CARES Act, to also provide some aid to some of our private schools, yes.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody have any other questions? I guess my other question, Mr. Curry, is if there's items that we chose to fund the first time around that may not come to fruition, what happens to that money?
I, I think it's subject to be allocated. It's, no, no money has gone out the door, so to say, to any business of Rappahannock or Sperryville Community Alliance, for example. We didn't talk much about the logistics, but because of the, the strings attached to all of this, we need to be very careful and make sure that we have either agreements in place or it's on a reimbursable basis. So, I would say if it's not spent, it's available for some other purpose.
Do you think that something like the lighted sign that's now in the village, I mean, we did have to ask VDOT for several of those early on, and depending on how things unfold, they may be useful in the future? And, and most, I know Culpeper County has some of those, and they light them with different messages, and I wonder, is that something that would be able to be covered with the CARES Act funding?
I, I have seen others do that, and I don't see why it wouldn't be, particularly if you're doing it for a COVID-19 reason, and then you can use it for anything in the future.
And, and knowing that, as odd as it is, that speeding is actually up all over due to roads feeling emptier, would you be able to use CARES Act funding for any traffic calming measures?
I think that's a bit more of a stretch, but.
I'm willing to, sometimes it's good to stretch.
Yeah.
All right. Seems like enough. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
I would say the guidelines and the frequent asked questions continue to be updated. So, as we go through time, those documents, which are linked in the, in the agenda item under Board Docs, every couple of weeks or so, those are getting updated with some more definitive answers. So, things may become available or, or understood over time that we don't think are acceptable now, or vice versa, and we'll just have to keep watching that. I will say that from the equitable sharing part, the town probably should get their equitable share of the next tranche, so that'd be $8,000 in, in the table that I attached. That's the only thing I showed in that second column for this second $640,000.
Would it make sense to reach out to all the stakeholders, like we did the first time around, to see if they have any different needs?
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
How does everyone feel about that? Might be a good launch point for the discussion. Thank you very much. Anything else? All right, that takes us to the next item on the agenda, new business, the REC Board of Directors' proxy vote. Is there a motion or any discussion in regard, or actually, Mr. Curry, could you talk a little bit about this first, please?
Sure, as board members are aware, most residents received in their mail a document that looks kind of like this, and encourages the member owners of the cooperative to voice their position on who to vote for for the upcoming REC Board elections. By virtue of having accounts, the Board of Supervisors has the opportunity to do that. Staff didn't want to presuppose how you may want to vote. Two of the three regions are, there's unopposed, and there's one that has opposition, an incumbent, and then a new face looking to come in who may be more sympathetic to broadband. So, staff would be happy to fill these documents out to reflect the wish of the board. Or you just give me general direction, I can go back and interpret the positions based on that and complete it.
Do any of the members of the board have an opinion or wish to make a motion regarding this agenda item?
We've never had this before, I'm sorry to.
No, go.
I guess we've just kind of ignored it, but.
This is the first time they showed up in the mail to my office, which, well, in a couple of years, right?
Yeah.
Surprised me, but it made sense. I got one at home, and then it made sense that I got them in the office, too.
I, I don't know the gentleman personally, but I, I think Mr. Sanford Reeves is a very well-thought-of individual in the community. He served Culpeper County for, it says 28 years, I didn't realize it was that long on the Planning Commission, he's the current chairman, but he's very, very well-thought-of.
Is that a motion, Mr. Frazier?
I can make it a motion, but I, I just thought I would say that, I, I do not know him personally, but I think he's got a fine reputation, so I'll put that in the form of a motion if the board would entertain it.
And what's his name again?
Sanford Reeves Jr. is the name of the gentleman who's currently the incumbent. And the other gentleman that's running for the, the only contested seat is Sam Heald.
Seth.
Seth Heald, I'm so sorry.
So, is the motion to support Seth Heald?
No, sir, it's to support.
Sanford Reeves, I'm sorry.
Sanford Reeves Jr.
Oh, I would personally like to promote Seth Heald, I've heard about him and, and not contacted by him, but other people that know him and recommend him, because he is interested in the broadband and the solar energy and the stuff that's going to, you know, help, help, I think he's progressive.
Well, we do have a motion on the floor, and so I will second that motion for purposes of discussion, so we can clear that motion before we take any other action. So it sounds like you wanted to make some other comments, Mr. Parrish?
First of all, the motion is for what purpose?
To support Mr. Sanford Reeves and his run as an incumbent.
The incumbent? As, as a board?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think it's, Mr. Curry's got three votes because of the electric in the company, or in the county that we have as a, a business. So it's not really, it's not the board voting, if I understand it correctly, it's just your voting, your three.
How many votes do we have, Mr. Curry?
At first, we have four, actually.
Of course.
Based on what?
I would imagine the number of accounts that we have, is that correct?
We, we have a lot of accounts, but we've recently combined them into some master billings, so I don't know if that has anything to do with why we have four and not 20.
I can say it is my understanding that Mr. Heald is pro-broadband and the REC Board hopefully approving to move forward with the broadband initiative, whereas I do believe Mr. Reeves, was it Mr. Reeves that just sent out the message that said they're not going to do broadband, they're going to refuse to do broadband, it's not something that REC should do from a fiscal responsibility standpoint? Please correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I believe it was Mr. Reeves.
I, I don't know them, I, yeah, I saw that, it was, it was in the Rappahannock News.
Yep.
Isn't REC doing the fiber build out, though?
They're building out fiber for their own purposes, but they're in a process right now where they're evaluating whether they should build out fiber to the home and whether, and I believe they are seeking Rural Digital Opportunity Fund, ARDOF funds, from the federal government, to have a major investment of dollars to help make it more cost-effective.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any further discussion? Motion and second is for the reappointment of Sanford Reeves Jr. using, how many of the votes did you intend to send his way, Mr. Frazier?
I don't know, I guess, wouldn't make any sense to split them, but I guess all of them.
Right.
I, I would just like to say before you called a question that. I, I would just like to say before you call the question that I know that this repower group has got ties to the West Coast, and, and I don't know that we need that type of thing to be interjected in our local cooperative.
Well, as I recall, none of the repower candidates won their seats last year. I think they were all defeated.
Yeah.
And, and I got quite a few postcards from California that I have to say left me with an uneasy feeling.
Yeah, they, they've got connections to some bad places.
Any further discussion? All right, I'm going to call the question then. We have a motion on the floor to allocate all four of our votes to the incumbent. Mr. Sanford Reeves Jr., Mr. Fraser.
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
No.
Mr. Whitson?
No.
Mr. Parrish?
Nay.
And I also, I vote aye. So sorry, that's always confusing, Mr. Curry, and I'm trying to fix that. All right, do I have an alternate motion for this agenda item?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion based on the support of the broadband and the need of Rappahannock County with broadband for Seth Hield to receive our four votes.
You'll have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish.
We, we are aware of his left coast connections, right?
Aware of what?
This, this gentleman is, 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 he's, he's aligned here with PEC and Environmental Council, but that repower group is, is connected with people out in California, which are not in tune with the people of Rappahannock County.
I don't know about California, but I've been, he's been, he's been highly recommended by people that I, whose opinion I respect.
Are those people in line with the people from California or people from Rappahannock?
Not that I know of.
I mean, that's, that's my, one of my greatest concerns is.
Right.
That he's, he's part of a group, he's a co-founder of the group, and they are, they are entwined with people from California.
I mean, it was a very orchestrated, almost political campaign.
Yeah.
I don't know about California. Long ways away.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Fraser?
Nay.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And nay for me, please. Thank you, Mr. Curry. Takes us to the next item on the agenda, the 2020 State Legislative Priorities. This was an item that I requested, Mr. Curry, to please place on the agenda. It's evolved from my sitting in on what would normally be the VACO Regional Conference the other week, last week. And one of the things that they asked for in the course of the call was that we send them a list of our legislative priorities for our county. It was a very interesting format for the call, because it, I guess my other question, Mr. Curry, is if there's items that we chose to fund the first time around that may not come to fruition, what happens to that money?